Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order this February 1st, 2024, regular board meeting of the School District of Haverford Township and to welcome those of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Administration Building. The meeting is being broadcast live and will be available for later viewing on our YouTube channel. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, members of our board will read the district's mission and goals.
The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
Our 2020 to 2025 district goals are social emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish, prepare contemporary citizens, modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, and designers within a complex global society, and diversity and inclusion. Establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops sociocultural proficiency.
Thank you. And now I'll ask Mr. Testa, our Board Secretary, to please call the role.
Dr. King. Dr. Larson.
Here.
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Dr. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Dr. Shelton.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here. Latonya King is traveling for work and couldn't be with us tonight. A next item on our agenda is the official minutes. I will welcome a motion to approve the official minutes from the January 18th, 2024, regular board meeting.
Snodgrass moved. Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. The next section of our agenda is for reports from students and unfortunately, our middle school representative is unable to attend tonight and Mr. Haran's not even here to fill in for him. So we will go right to our high school student and we've got Austin McConnell back with us tonight. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. It is truly a pleasure to be here before you once again to share some noteworthy updates regarding the recent developments at Haverford High School. The commencement of the second semester at HHS this Monday has been marked by a seamless progression. Our dedicated students are diligently finalizing their schedules and adjusting to the challenges presented by their new classes. I am excited to announce our upcoming second back-to-school night scheduled for this Monday, the 5th, beginning at 6:00 PM, presents a valuable opportunity for parents and guardians to engage with the academic environment and gain insight into their child's educational journey. Over this past weekend, our ski club organized an exhilarating trip to Vermont where over 100 students along with teachers and parents enjoyed two full days of skiing at Killington Mountain. Such experiences contribute not only to physical well-being, but also foster a sense of camaraderie among our students. Few scheduling updates include the rescheduling of our jazz band concert now scheduled for the evening of February 7th at 7:00 PM. Concurrently, on the same night, we'll be hosting a financial aid night for seniors featuring a representative from the PA Higher Education Assistance Agency. The event will be divided into two time slots from 6:00 to 7:00 PM and from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Turning our attention to the realm of athletics, our track and field team has demonstrated exceptional prowess with Olivia C. Slack and Nate Donahue breaking school records at the Armory last week. This accomplishment is part of a consistent trend with HHS' track and field records being shattered at every winter meet this season, setting the stage for an exciting run towards championships in the upcoming weeks. In the realm of basketball, the boys' team triumphed over Strathaven on their senior night, securing another victory for the Fords, taking their record to 4-15. Meanwhile, the girls' basketball team also conquered Ridley on their senior night this past Tuesday and boasts a stellar 17-3 record, currently ranked seventh in PIAA District One. The girls are currently competing in a game against Ridley in our very own younger gymnasium that started at 7:00 PM. Notable athletic achievements extend both beyond the basketball court and track, with our Bachi team having their first game triumphing over Archbishop Carroll in a tense overtime match last week. Our swim and dive teams continue to impress with a commendable 7-1 record. Additionally, several Haverford wrestlers showed their resilience and skill at the Central League Championships despite facing formidable challengers. Ice hockey has been making waves, securing victories against Avengrove last week and defeating Strathaven on Monday. As they gear up for the playoffs, the anticipation for a successful run is palpable with their senior night game also tonight at 8:00 PM against Marple Newtown. In the realm of fundraising, our robotics team invites you to a breakfast on February 3rd at the high school, offering an all-you-can-eat breakfast feast complemented by endless coffee, tea, or orange juice. FBLA's Spirit Store is currently open as they prepare for Future Business Leaders of America Week from February 11th to February 17th. Boys The Cross is selling merchandise to support their upcoming spring season and a newly established student-run nonprofit called Rent or Buy the Runway aims to create a more sustainable and economical, sorry, yes, wait, economical prom experience while repurposing beautiful dresses hanging in old closets. Lastly, preparations for graduation are well underway with the class of 2024 receiving their cap and gowns last week. As we navigate through these dynamic times, let us continue to celebrate the achievements of our students and the vibrant spirit of our Haverford community. Thank you and have a wonderful evening and hopefully this is a quick one tonight.
Thank you. And that's a tough act to follow for Dr. Rusi.
Sure is. We continue to keep it a quick one. Just a few notes. Again, a gentle reminder that our registration for the 24-25 school year remains open, so we encourage those who have neighbors with children who are kindergarten age to let them know that that is available. This evening, one of the items on our agenda is to issue an RFP for before and after childcare. We notify, actually, Elwyn notified parents and guardians of the children who participate in that before and after care that they will no longer be providing that service. We have had a number of inquiries from other providers to the point where we feel issuing an RFP for that stating in there that it's an independent program, so it's not the district itself is not offering before and after childcare, but it would end up being a lease agreement with an entity that would provide before and after care. So that is an item on our agenda this evening. An item on the next board meeting agenda will be the 25-26 calendar, so please look out for that. My public service announcement for this evening, although we don't see any snow in the immediate future, we are going to begin communicating with families. We're really fortunate in that so many of our facilities seem to be great places for sledding. And they particularly over at Cooper Town and Linwood, they seem to attract lots of folks from throughout the community. And so our public service announcement that we're going to put out and our principals will anytime we think that that snow is on the way. When our trucks arrive at the facility to clear snow, we're going to ask if people who have driven and parked in those parking lots, if they would please move the car. We're not asking to stop sledding, but we're asking to move those cars so that our staff can get that parking lot plowed. Quite often, the plows need to run more than once. If it's a heavy snowfall, they don't wait until the end of the snow, so they're trying to make their run throughout the district. So that's our public service announcement that we're going to start to put out with inclement weather. Another item on our agenda tonight and that I will make a few comments about is the health and safety plan for the district. First and foremost, I think it's important to note that it is a requirement that we review that plan every six months. As long as any district is receiving ESER funding, that is one of the requirements. So nothing has occurred. We are not seeing any uptick in COVID illnesses, but it is a requirement. We are now at the six-month point in time. So some of the changes that are in there, we are removing within the section that is appears on page four of that document, that we will have interventions in place for students impacted by COVID, you know, who must quarantine and recuperate. You know, if students are sick and that they can't come to school now, they're usually not able to do work at home. And students who need to be home for a longer period of time, we have procedures that we put in place working with families. We don't need to isolate that this is just something for COVID. So we're removing that mention from the document. And the same is true for that we'll have a transition plan for the student to return to school. That's just something, again, if a child has been out for a long period of time, our building administrators and teachers work with the family in what they would be considered a transition plan for that child to return to school. Again, we don't feel it needs to be stipulated just in this instance here. Moving through the document, the other changes you can see highlighted there, we have inserted or in some cases moved from the conclusion of a sentence to the beginning of it, the words "when required." So when we are required to engage in certain actions, we will. When we are required to report COVID cases to the health authority, when we are required to collect that information. But unless we're required, we're not, as I've mentioned a number of times here before, when a parent or guardian indicates that a child is not going to be present in school because they are sick, we don't say what's wrong. If that question is asked, it's out of kindness and what can we do to help? It's not for recording purposes for any other illness. So we're removing those references and trying to treat this more so in a generic way. And we're removing that we require a self-screening, that's not something we can monitor. You know, that people are self-screening, we're assuming that if people are not feeling well, they're not coming to work and if students are not well, parents are keeping them home. But it seemed at this point for us to say, "you must," it's kind of difficult for us to say that with fidelity we are able to monitor, "you must stay home when you're sick." So that highlights the changes. We will have time and it is an item on the agenda. So Ms. Wedeman, when we get to that agenda, we'll ask for any discussion and we certainly can discuss that item as we move forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Timing okay, Austin, on that one?
Item four of our agenda is for public comment pertaining to items on tonight's agenda and we had no one sign up, so we'll move on to board reports. The first board report is for Delaware County Community College and that is Latonya King, who is not here tonight. The next is for DCIU, Kristen Larson.
Sure. Thank you, Bridgette. So we have not had any meetings with DCIU since I reported out at our last board meeting. Just as a note, the next DCIU board meeting will take place for February, on February 7th, and DCIU committee meetings will take place on February 14th. So at our next meeting, I'll report out on those.
Thank you. Item C is for the Delaware County Legislative Council.
The next meeting is February 14th, so no report.
No report. Item D is for the Pennsylvania School Boards Association. Dave Schwartz.
Very good.
Item E is Finance and Facilities Committee Meeting. Dave Schwartz.
We did have a meeting this past week. We did have a chance to visit the schools, Chatham Park and Middle School, to look at the areas for new construction that is proposed. And our next Finance and Facilities meeting is on the 8th.
All right. Thank you. Item F is for Curriculum and People's Services Meeting. That would also be Latonya King. I can report that February 8th at 7:15 following Finance and Facilities, that Curriculum and People's Services will meet next. The Policy Committee, Antoinette.
No report.
The Board President's Report. I was also going to mention the tour that several board members, a lot of board members were able to attend. We were with JR and our Facilities Department and Rep from CB Development to walk through areas of Haverford Middle School, particularly the Gym D, which is slated for summer work that the district would do to modernize and upgrade some of the amenities, replacing the rubberized court with wood and improving lighting, putting some additional seating and accessibility in there. And we saw how well-used the gym is. There was tumblers and cheer kids in there and heard about all the activities that that gym utilizes all day long. Then we saw the cafeteria that is subject of an expansion, saw how the space that is currently outdoors, kind of a patio and ramp, would be able to be enclosed to add much-needed additional seating. And then we went to Chatham and saw areas where the cafeteria would be expanded, how the renovations to the gym and auditorium would utilize that space better. And walked around the first level to see how the entryway would be reconfigured and expanded and went into a classroom as a sample to see what renovations and upgrades would be happening in the classrooms. So that was a good way for the board to visualize the proposed improvements and things that we'll be talking more about in Facilities and Finance and future board meetings. And then Antoinette and I had the opportunity to go to the IDC, intra-district council, kind of the representatives from PTOs meet regularly and this was an opportunity for board leadership to go and had a really nice conversation on a wide range of topics. Interest at the PTOs include some of the space constraints that the district is facing and planning for, question about the potential availability of all-day kindergarten, busing, transportation, safe routes to school. There was questions about our science curriculum, suggestions for our equity work, some shout-outs for the med careers program and interest in offerings in our music department and music programs for our students. And then always a popular topic of how PTOs can better communicate with members of the school community and get more participation and engagement, but appreciate the time that we spent with them. It was a good conversation. The next section of our agenda is for Finance and Facilities and Item A is the bill list. I will accept a motion to approve disbursements for payment totaling $1,146,397.15.
Moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion approved. Item B is for donations. I will accept a motion to approve the donations listed below.
Shelton moved.
For a second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This is wonderful. Thank you.
That's great. I'm curious about the bio of this person that is...
Is there any more information we can get on any of these donations, which are all very generous and welcome?
Actually, the schools had reached out to us that they were contacted by these donors that wanted to donate to the district. So the first one was in memory of a parent of the person who reached out to us from the class of 1934 that wanted to donate money to the district just as a give-back, so they set up a trust to give back to the district.
How wonderful.
The one at the very bottom was a donor who had students in the district, is looking to make a recurring donation and they're looking to put that towards maybe a student who wants to go to a tech program or some kind of career program. So that would certainly help. We researched some of what the tuitions were for technical schools in the area, specifically who the high school has applications for, for those students, and this would certainly help in that first year. Not fully cover, but it would help them along. And Giant has always been a good donor of the district with the nursing neighbors programs and I believe part of this too comes from...
Acme.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the Acme.
We love the Acme.
Giant for a shop.
Yeah.
So you have the ability...
I'll come later.
A lot of times you have the ability to donate when you do shop and kind of put your points towards schools in your area, so it was nice to see that as well.
So a gift from Acme and all members of our community who contribute to that.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, thank you for these folks for their generosity. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Donations are warmly accepted. Item C is request for proposals. I will accept a motion to approve authorized members of the board to issue an RFP accepting proposals from licensed childcare providers interested in leasing space in the district's five elementary schools to deliver independent before-school and after-school childcare services.
Schwartz moved.
Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question, Ashley. Just I know a lot of anxious parents out there. With reselling and RFP, what's the timeframe for getting proposals back, reviewing them and actually coming to consensus on the selection?
Our timeframe is to be able to award that in March, early March.
Early March, okay.
Yeah. We have that ready to go tomorrow and it's a tight schedule, but we can get that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And what are some of the criteria in the proposal? Are we leasing to the lowest bidder? Are we looking at certifications, quality of programming? I also know this would be independent work. We're not responsible for the work that's provided. So what would the RFP entail?
So the RFP really entails, you know, looking at have there been any citations against, you know, any of the providers, sorry. You know, what is their history like in terms of hiring? How do they work with special needs students? How do they work with English learners? The quality of the program itself, because this is something that is independent, we are not going to judge that. So we will be looking at, you know, what is their staffing ratio? What are the rates that they will be charging? Will they give preference to those families who are currently utilizing the services by the provider that is there now? They're more along the things that we'll be taking a look at to make that decision.
Okay. Is this in terms of timeframe? So if this were awarded, would it be year to year? Are we looking at a certain time span? Would there be opportunity to renew?
We're looking at a two-year, so that it would be a two-year agreement to start and then the potential to renew.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
I do have a question about the rates and I'm glad to hear that it will be in the RFP that will be looking at that. And I would just, you know, what would make me nervous because I know our previous provider did keep prices lower. And I'm not saying we should set some sort of, you know, ceiling or anything, but to see what they charge people at their regular facilities and compare them, because of what I don't want is a provider coming into our facilities and then, you know, charging our own families more just because they're renting our facility, which is really a privilege for them to rent. So, you know, being, I don't know if we're asking for some sort of comparison or something like that, but I think the rate will be really important and I know, you know, we don't know if it will go up from what was charged by our previous provider or not. It very well may, but just making sure that our families aren't getting, you know, charged more just because they're in our buildings, which we should know that.
Very mindful of that.
Okay.
All right. Good discussion. Anything else? All in favor, and this is for issuing the RFP.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section seven of our agenda is for Human Resources. Item A is for appointments. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is for leave of absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave request.
Shelton moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is for professional employee. I will welcome a motion to recognize the following temporary professional employee who has fulfilled the three-year probationary period required by law and having received satisfactory ratings during this period has met eligibility to receive their professional employee contract effective January 23rd, 2024.
Larson moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's always congratulations. It's an exciting milestone.
Hannah Elliott at Linwood. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section eight of our agenda is for People's Services. Item A is Educational Services Agreements. I will welcome a motion to approve the following educational service agreements for district students. These agreements cover reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
Vitale moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section nine of our agenda is for Curriculum and Instruction, and here we have a fun one, Student Educational Excursions. I will welcome a motion to approve the Student Educational Excursions listed below.
Snodgrass moved.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
FBLA seems busy.
And then some select band members going to a PMEA regional band festival. Lots of good things. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Excursions are approved. Section 10 of our agenda is for Policy Matters. Item A is Policy 216. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 216 student records.
Snodgrass moved. Larson second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Only that there was no change between the second reading and tonight's proposed adoption of Policy 216. So just as a reminder, it went through the Policy Committee, which recommended it to come to the full board. It's now been through a first and second reading and tonight we are proposing this adoption.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of adopting the revised Policy 216?
Aye.
Any opposed? 216 passes. Item B is for Policy 303. I will accept a motion to adopt Policy 303, Employment of District Staff.
Snodgrass moved.
Shelton second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So this was one of the ones that is a new consolidated policy of previously, I believe, three policies that we had that had separated out our employee groups and had some different, but overall consistent language. And so now these, all of these groups and the employment of district staff policy is found in one policy. So we think that's easier for everyone to find and understand. And this was also up for a first reading and second reading for the board before tonight and there were no changes between the second reading and tonight's proposed adoption.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 303 is adopted. Next item under policy is Item C, Policy 602. I will accept a motion to accept this first reading of Policy 602, Budget Planning, Practices and Procedures and its corresponding AR or Administrative Regulations.
Larson moved. Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. So just like the policy we just looked at, this one is a combination of several separate policies that we used to have. The Policy Committee discussed the three previous policies, 601, 602, and 603, at the December 2023 Policy Committee meeting. We found that the different policies were slightly confusing because they were separated and they had, again, similar but different language. And so this policy reflects a combination of those three policies put into one. And so you'll see... Um, and so you'll see, um, previously, Policy 601 was objectives, 602 was budget planning, 603 was budget preparation. And so now we can have all of them in one place. And, um, again, uh, the Policy Committee felt like this was just more transparent, easier to follow, and also more consistent, um, to have them all in one place and in one policy, so that the, the overall themes could just carry throughout.
And just to clarify, um, will the title of this, once it goes through the approval process, will it include the word consolidated, or will that be taken out?
Right now it is in the title, so if we wanted to remove it from the title, we could do that for the second reading.
Okay.
Just right, in later times, that will not make so much sense to folks. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of accepting this first reading of 602?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our final item in policy tonight is 707. I will accept a motion to accept this first reading of Policy 707, School Facilities Use and Its Corresponding AR.
Snodgrass moved.
Larson, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, this one was also discussed at our December 2023 Policy Committee Meeting. Um, quite a, a lively discussion because this is a really important policy. As we just heard tonight, we have an RFP out going for our facility use. And so there are, um, a lot of different people within our schools, within our community and beyond that do seek to use our facilities. And so there was, uh, I think quite a bit of effort, obviously on the, the part of the administration putting this together before it came to the Policy Committee, and then at the committee itself to make sure that it, it made sense, it was easy to follow, we could understand the, the different classes. So if you look at the administrative regulation, you can see that there are classes of who is requesting facility use, um, to focus, uh, first and foremost on our students and the, the student, you know, the, the community that, that is actually within our schools and on a regular basis. And then, again, beyond that, something that serves our students. And then, you know, you can, you can see it gets further and farther away from, you know, the actual mission and goals of the, the district. So, um, I think this result is a much more clear and focused policy that is easier to understand and for, uh, anyone in our school or outside of our school who is looking for, uh, to figure out what our facility's policy is, hopefully this is a, a good place for them to go and, and understand what our policies are.
I think it's had a couple of readings at our committee meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, it was one that was debated, and I think because of the importance of, uh, this as a policy that interfaces so much with community groups, um, I think it does give, you know, a value statement of how, one, we are responsible for caring for the maintenance of the building, but also, um, recognizing that it is a community amenity and, um, benefits lots of groups who are interested in, um, utilizing the space for their programs, many of which serve students and, and members of our community. But, um, there is probably more demand than we can handle. So having a policy that helps, um, explain what, uh, the process is, what the costs are, and, um, making clear what the responsibilities and practices are is, is helpful because this is one that, you know, there is, um, an external lens on.
Great, and to that end, this is just a first reading in front of the board, so it will come back at the next board meeting for a second reading, and then at the board meeting after that for adoption. So we do welcome, obviously, comments from the board, looking through this, if there are any questions or proposed revisions. And then as well, um, anyone from the public who would like to comment on this, on this policy or any other policies that come before the board. That is, you know, at least, uh, uh, a part of the reason why we have these multiple readings before the policies are, are ultimately adopted.
And Ms. Snodgrass, I'll just add that the, uh, dates that are listed there, December 18th, 2024, uh, we'll have those revised.
Sure.
We will have that, dates indicate, and just for the benefit of the public, uh, the dates refer to when the policy was last reviewed and, and when it was last revised. We will make sure that the, those dates are accurate.
Okay, right, it was reviewed by the Policy Committee.
By committee, but...
December 18th, 2023. Um, not 2024, um, adopted in 2007. I always find it interesting when we last looked at these policies and, uh, so, glad we're getting a refresh for this one.
Yeah, I'm just realizing, we probably should have caught this, but Boy Scouts are now Scouts BSA.
Uh, okay.
This is official.
And they're just listed as a example of a group that might use it, but we should use their current name.
Yeah, right. Okay, that can be a change that will be easily made between the first and second reading. We don't just keep it generic.
We do not do Scouts.
Scouts, like scouts, or scouting, we're...
Yeah, scouting, they probably...
Yeah, for sure, because I know girls are allowed to be in the Boy Scouts and...
Yeah, right. All right, any other discussion on 707? All in favor of accepting this first reading?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 11 of our agenda is for Other Items, and tonight it includes the ARP/ESER Health and Safety Plan Update. So I will accept a motion to approve the ARP/ESER Healthy, Health and Safety Plan Update.
Snodgrass moved.
Larson, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Yeah, as Dr. Roshi said, this is, um, a pretty now routine exercise for this board and the administration to look at the Health and Safety Plan and bring it a little more current each time to the practices that prevail. And I think the, um, main takeaway for me at this point is how COVID, uh, is being handled like any other communicable disease that, um, schools have a long track record of dealing with and, and, um, trying to keep our school community healthy and dealing with illness. So, um, it just continues to, to move COVID into that category for which we have longstanding policies and practices.
Now, well, we have to continue to update this into perpetuity because we received ARP/ESER funds at some point. I, I know those funds are likely going away, so...
But once, once we are finished with those funds, we will not be required.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of accepting the revised Health and Safety Plan?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section 12 of our agenda is for Public Comments on Other Items, and we had no one sign up tonight. So then a report on Executive Session. Uh, the board met on Tuesday, January 30th, 2024, with counsel to discuss a confidential personnel matter. The board also met tonight, prior to tonight's meeting, to discuss, one, a confidential personnel matter with special counsel, and, two, pending real estate tax assessment appeal litigation with counsel. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on Thursday, February 15th, 2024, at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, I will welcome a motion to adjourn with a special request that we get a first and a second and follow it like all the other parliamentary procedures, so...
Snodgrass moved.
Larson, second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned at 8:16.
Wow.